So I am officially opening the meeting at 7:01 PM on Thursday, September 17th. The planning board meeting is in session and recording. Let's see, so our agenda for tonight is, sorry. The planning board agenda is tonight, we are, we don't have any minutes since we had a meeting just last week and have not had time to prepare. Minutes, thank you again Heidi for doing that. Anybody watching, we are looking for someone to take minutes. It is a small stipend paid position. Let's see, so current planning board business for the agenda tonight, one is zoning by law amendments and updates and discussion. We will start with some discussion on some administrative changes and updates, kind of housekeeping, some dimensional requirements that we are expecting to have our building inspector Chris Canny join us to walk us through what he's seeing in the field. Anti-segmentation language potentially and other zoning issues potentially that we as a board are looking to see what we can address and maybe not address. Looking ahead to Springtown meeting 2025. And the second item on the agenda is the MBTA 3A zoning overlay district update. And then we will wrap up with reports on meetings with a meetings with other boards and entities and the town planner report. Heidi Doyle. So we are, I see Chris Canny is getting ready to join us now. Hey, Chris.
Your motion to accept the agenda is written?
Yes, thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. So it's moved by Steph Harrison. Is there a second? Jim seconded, so all in favor of the agenda, we will do roll call vote since we are fully remote. So Addie Mae Weiss is an I, Steph Harrison.
I.
Jim Guarino.
I.
Frank Hope.
Right.
Hi, so yeah, the four members present, we are all I.
Okay. Addie Mae, is there um, an option to just cover a logistical thing that's not on the agenda that's about planning board? Like how the planning board runs its meetings? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, I think that kind of falls into right now we're opening the meeting and yes.
Okay. Um, Heidi sent out a note saying that she didn't get any applicants for taking minutes, so I can volunteer to take minutes this time. I feel like Heidi's been doing way, way more than she signed up for. Her hours are extremely long and I think that we should all pitch in to give her a break when we can, and this is not part of her job description, so I can do it today if that works for folks.
Um, that would be great Steph, and then we'll figure out the next meeting if um, yeah, I, you know, like we can all take, we can rotate it. I think that's how advisory does it. So until we have someone else that's able to, that's willing, um, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, okay, so, but we're opening, um, let's see. Heidi or Jim or Chris, since you guys have been communicating kind of the most recently as kind of a pre-meeting committee essentially. To discuss this, does it make sense to pull up the spreadsheet that has kind of the different bylaws? Or I'm trying to think of what's the starting point here for, there's a lot of kind of homework and ideas, but.
Yeah, so Heidi and I met last Friday. We kind of, we went through the bylaws and she had pointed out sections that were um, in conflict that she had noticed and then had been in discussions with Chris about. Uh, much of it's related to the accessory dwelling unit that needs to be updated and modernized. But there's other things um that Chris had pointed out regarding um you know, frontage and that sort of thing.
Um, I can share the spreadsheet, I think. Okay, why don't you get all, let me pull it up and then you guys. Let's see, Chris, do you have any thoughts on what you think makes sense or what you think is priority?
Sure. Uh, hi, everybody. You know, I think a lot of this stuff, some of this is like deferred maintenance, right? We haven't really touched the bylaw in any significant way, even just doing like house cleaning. In several years, um, we've only kind of added things that were like absolutely required by the state. And we skipped over some of the stuff that it would have been easy to 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 deal with. You know, a while ago, um, and so we have a lot of those kind of things that have built up over time, so that would include the definitions of like lot width, building line. That were contentious a few years ago on that, if you remember that house on Lake Street. Uh, there was a lot that went to um, the Supreme Court and it was a whole thing. And anyway, um, decisions were made, the ZBA sort of imparted a a interpretation for how we were supposed to deal with those things and we, they just haven't been updated into the bylaw um, to to make that hopefully clearer. Um, so there's a few of those kind of things, there's a few changes. That are just sort of practical things that would be nice to have like definitions updated to officially uh uh take in something that we've sort of been like interpreting, you know, uh, i- is a patio at grade considered a structure? Well, it's not explicitly mentioned in in the things that are exempted from that structure, but we'd like to, we'd like to be able to to know one way or the other. Um, so there's a few things like that. I think the ADU is going to be the biggest and toughest uh, thing for us to deal with. Obviously, this is coming down from the state, we have this new bylaw and it overlaps pretty well with what we have in in line for the apartments thing. And it's just a question of is there, you know, the the state lets us provide reasonable regulation? How how deep do we want to go into that um, to try to get out in front? I mean, again, not to say that we're trying to stop these things, but just to make them, you know, make sense in the town. What are we measuring? Do we include parking spaces or garage spaces? You know, is that included in the area? I don't know. You know, uh, these are, these are all the questions. Uh, then there's a few other things that are like, um, again, sort of 4A stuff. You know, our bylaw requires special permits for private schools, private schools includes daycares. Daycares are actually Dover Amendment Protected Uses and you can't require a special permit for them. I don't know why it's never been changed, but it it needs to get changed. We have some additional weird requirements for agricultural uses, again Dover Protected Uses. And we're we're sort of putting additional dimensional requirements on like buildings and and other things. Um, I'm not sure why or what the logic behind that is, and so it merits a look, I think. Because some of it's quite restrictive and I think if if it was challenged in court, it would probably be thrown out. So anyway, we have this, you know, this great big what list that you're probably looking at right now. That just sort of runs down all the stuff that at least jumped out to Heidi and I and um, and Jim and in our conversations about what sections we might need to touch. We have some, I had some draft language on a few of these things, but we don't have everything even close to like ready for prime time. Um, as far as what we proposed to do, I mean, some of it is as simple as like deleting a word or adding a little clause or something like that. And other ones might merit a total rewrite, you know. Anyway, and you know, we obviously we have to deal with the fact that um, we have to send this through town meeting and hopefully make it palatable. Which is, which is always a challenge. I'm glad to be here sort of talking about this stuff and obviously, well, I think it would make sense to categorize these changes into things that could be considered housekeeping and are pretty simple and straightforward. And and I would, you know, say that we would want to make like, again, when it comes time to do this, we would probably want to make several different articles at town meeting, one that would cover housekeeping and would be pretty straightforward, one that would probably cover ADUs. That would be um, again, just focused on that. And then if there's other things that are sort of like wish list stuff that we'd like to do. Uh, maybe that would be like a third zoning thing. So just to not overwhelm people and put it all into one article. Does that sort of explain why we're here at least?
Yeah, I guess, um, actually, I think I might let Heidi kind of help us streamline where we should start because there is a lot, I don't know exactly. Every time I screen share um, from my laptop, it's, I'm never, it's the strangest thing I'm not, I guess, is doing it as frequently. So on Zoom, I'm not sure exactly. I'm trying to share just the document. I don't know if you're able to see anything clearly or if it's just, um, if you're getting really tiny print and it doesn't make a lot of sense. So it might not, I don't know if this is helpful or if I should stop share because right now it's, it's an Excel spreadsheet with we've got zoning by law sections to look at. And I know Heidi had pulled some things that related to ADUs and multi-dwellings that were going to be in conflict come February, as she stated at the last meeting. And then there's a bunch of other things that we've talked about in past meetings. Um, in January, we met with you, Chris, to talk about some of these housekeeping items. And I I think some of those are, I don't know. I feel like the most complicated one on here was the lot width and um, the others are a lot of just kind of language cleanup. And I don't know if anyone has a good document to explain the lot with dilemma or Chris, if I'm, if maybe I'm going to share because I think this is just confusing more.
Yeah, um. I I agree. I think lot width and building line are the hardest ones to pin down, mostly because what we have in the bylaws is really complicated and hard to express. And at the same time, whatever we proposed, it's going to change that, needs to retain at least all of the features of what we have now. We don't, we don't want to do something that creates non-conforming lots all of a sudden where previously they were conforming. So we need to make sure that whatever we do will still meet, you know, what was, what was the the law, you know, what was in the bylaw last week, um, with everything going forward. And that's a challenge just because of the way it's written and the way it's been interpreted for a long time and you sort of have to like work out. You know, all this sort of different iterations of what we're trying to to change. We we actually were talking to Joyce uh, in conservation about this the other day and it sort of made her put her surveying hat on because oftentimes she's the woman is presenting these kind of things to different towns to do an A and R plan or whatever it may be. And I'm just trying to get some input on what is something that is simple to put on a plan? What is something that is, it is, you know, visually easy to read so that, you know, the the board, me, the applicant, the surveyor, everybody can see clearly that the thing that they're presenting is going to comply. I mean, I I've worked in towns where, you know, the the standard for lot width is that you must draw a circle that can move through the property. How do you draw that? You know, it's like a path. How do I make a path of a circle? I mean, again, it can be done. It's just a weird drawing. Um, so trying to come up with something that again, that that sort of keeps the geometry of what we've got now in a way that hopefully is less weird to 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 draw. I mean, again, it, you know, we're we're allowing people to draw a a line for lot width. It's up to 45 degrees skewed from the two sidelines. It's just it's not easy, you know. It's clumsy and um, and of course, the diagrams we have aren't really very helpful either. So and we do really need to deal with that because we have this decision that kind of gave us a a clearer interpretation for how we're supposed to do it.
I think that might be the piece that some of us are missing, Chris.
Yeah, I I'll get all that that information from it was, I think, the lot 69F Lake Street file and I can, we can bring that to the board along with whatever we have proposed for language that we can kind of review this altogether. But yeah, I mean, if I just go through this list like quickly, you know, you can see this and things that are in definitions. Some of these are really easy, you know. The definition of average lowest grade is something we've been talking about.
Can we just pause you for a second? Can we get that up on the screen?
Yep.
This is the document you're talking about?
Uh, let's see.
Yes, if you go right down a little further there, the lot with those three little diagrams that showed angles were what we were looking at.
This is what we had talked about in January. I believe, and actually it kind of goes back to 2022, I believe.
Yeah, there were even versions of this that Gino was working on where he wiped out the whole bylaw section and just replaced it with a completely different idea too. Uh, this, this goes back a ways. You can see all the red for for the changes that were sort of thought about on this.
Um, I think this is all just lot width, so maybe not helping at the moment.
Yeah, so I mean, I think to me, this is like a, this is like a separate meeting just on lot width and building line where we nail that stuff down. And I think some of these other ones, like I was just getting into, the definition stuff is going to, that's a, most of that is pretty straightforward, other than the ADU part.
What, what do you think is the most complicated part of the ADU conundrum?
Well, we're going to end up with this sort of two tier of the same idea, right? The apartment thing that the bylaw has in it now obviously goes up to 1,200 square feet. It's a special permitted thing. Otherwise, it's very similar in concepts to what the ADU uh, state regulation is going to be. The question is, are we going to retain that? Uh, and have this sort of like, you know, by right level at 900 square feet and then a 1,200 square foot one uh, that's by special permit. Are we going to try to make them speak the same language where the, you know, um, some of the terms that come over from the new changes to 40A, are we going to pick that up in our bylaw so that, so that the apartment section or if maybe we change it to, you know, large ADU, I don't know what you call it, but anyway. You know, we just want to make sure that the two things sort of work together if we're going to continue to have that that special permitted version of this thing. You know, above what the by right uh, size one is. And and obviously then the question becomes like, are there any other additional requirements that we want to put on them? I mean, is is there a setback requirement? Uh, you know, a height requirement, is there a, you know, how many, how many parking spaces within a building? Can you, you know, I mean, these are the things that you're allowed to regulate related to that. And so I think we have to look at that new law and say, okay, you know, we're we're allowed to look at whatever these six different things are. Um, do we want to look at those or not? You know, do we, do we care? One way or the other, and we probably do.
Yeah, and I think we would, I'm just kind of the tone of the boards over the years, I would say we care, I guess. I feel like our kind of the lessons learned in the last, in the most recent couple of years have been if we can do some cleaning up of bylaw language to make things upfront, clear of what's allowed by right and maybe minimize the number of special permit applications and or, you know, I guess, special permits we seem to keep. I don't know, I I like especially if the state is pushing it by right, I feel like we would maybe be better served to focus on, okay, what can we be comfortable with? That would be parameters that would be a by right. I don't know what other people looked at it. I mean, I, we we know it's as of February, whatever we have is no longer enforceable as as was mentioned last week um, that we learned we're not going to be punished for not having a bylaw in place that adapts to the new state bylaw. And so it's different in that regards with the MBTA zoning. But anything we are existing bylaws as of February then are no longer enforceable, so.
But one of the big things too is right now we require ownership, like an owner has to live in one of the units and the by right with the state is just not a requirement on either unit. So if you're going to try and say the 1,200 unit one by special permit, is that going to be an owner has to be in there or not? I I don't know, we just have to really watch. Um, and the other issue we have is EO HLC is now creating a whole new website and they're going to be addressing parameters and and giving interpretations and that's not really out yet. So that's going to be coming out probably within the next one to two months. So I don't think we should get too solidified in a special way. So that's what I kind of was hoping to kind of do an overview tonight, maybe go down this list and say, oh, yeah, yeah, you need to work on, need to work on. But then say, yes, that's, you know, like for end of October, you know, beginning November is when we could say what has EO HLC come out with? Hopefully craft hours matter.
Yeah. And a a lot of these other things that are listed in this, this list of stuff to look at is related to um, you know, requirements within the bylaw for like one dwelling per lot. For example, well, that's going to go out the window, we have to change that. Um, you know, and so we have to make a new reference to it. It's going to allow an ADU of some type. Um, there's a number of other things where um, again, the bylaw has been so geared towards everything is single family, everything is single family all the time. Um, and this, you know, effectively allows multiple dwellings on single lots. Uh, you know, in any zone in town, because the whole town is zoned for single family residents. There's a lot of cleanup where, you know, this, this extends into like other parts of the bylaw. It's separate from just creating something that works for ADUs for the town. We have to go back and sort of tidy up. So that we're not saying, you know, th- th- this is prohibited in in another section. Anyway, yeah. I I had three hours this morning when I'm talking about the building code ramifications of this whole thing. So it's, it's, this is the talk of the of the state at the moment.
Yeah, we did also notify or notice, you know, three areas where we felt it would be good to have town council weigh in. And maybe we could look at those three areas, they were the ones in yellow. Um, the first one was a low and moderate income apartment review. We have that in our bylaws right now. I think we have to say, should this still be in there or not in there? How is that going to affect with the new by right? Make sure there's no conflict. So I think what I'd like to get, uh, and also there's a CMR reference, which is no longer valid that we have in there, so. I think that would be good to get to town council and get some input on that one. Another one, we have um on page 15, it said offsite septic and it's in the EA area only. I don't know if that's something that we want to look at and continue and if that's even allowed to have that limitation.
Right, especially considering that a septic system is not considered a structure under zoning. So how are we even regulating it? Yeah.
Yeah. And then the last one is we have ADU and the dwelling counts, you know, how we have, if you look at our open space subdivision, we're counting so many dwellings. Now you're calling this a accessory dwelling unit. Does that count in the number of dwellings in our open space plan as well? It's like I I think we have to be very careful of terminology and and what is the impact of that? Happy that people weigh in here.
I feel like there was a time when we tried to do principal and accessory, but it didn't go anywhere. But again, a lot of these things, I feel like through the years, we tried to, we take a stab at it and then it gets controversial and it gets kind of then backburnered. But now we've got a couple of state mandates that are pushing that we are forced to address this.
You wanted to start the top and just read down this list?
Yeah, let's do that. So, so kind of from the list of priorities, page three of our zoning bylaw, section 1.5 is the definitions and accessory buildings, ADU, add ADU to reference. So I think that's an easy one. That's a cleanup language issue.
Can you share your screen again, Addie Mae? Are you, you're talking from the Excel sheet?
Um. Let me pull that up again.
Just running down that list.
I couldn't tell if uh it was working.
It was working before.
You could just make it bigger, but I could show you where to place on the, on the links to make it a little bit larger.
It's posted on the agenda as well.
But then you're going back and forth between the Zoom and, you know, that document, which is kind of challenging also.
Okay. Am I sharing now?
No.
No, I'm not. Okay. Where is the share? Remind me again where the shared screen is on the
Bottom in the green of the Zoom.
Yeah, Barrow.
Okay, wait, why I don't want this.
You may have to hover over it.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Share.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, now if you take your cursor and go to the bottom right of the, of your screen, that's the Excel spreadsheet screen, you see, go a little higher, right there, it won't stop.
Oh.
Go down a little bit, a little too far. Up a little bit, right there. Now go to the right, all the way to the right. You see where it says 100? You just had it on there. There you go.
Just bigger?
There you go.
Yeah, that works.
Are you able to see? Cause it gets truncated on my side, so I can't tell exactly what you're able to see. Okay, as long as everybody's able to see this. So the first one, we've just gone through and we've decided that's adding a definition that's pretty straightforward. This, the next one again on on page three, section 1.5 is the, another definition of just average lowest grade. To, in some way to adjust the definition to allow for walkout basements or drive under garages that don't majorly in a way that doesn't majorly impact the overall height of the structure.
You don't have an issue with the methodology of that calculation, do you, Chris?
It's a strange, we do a weird thing where we say that whatever the lowest grade is is counted for the entire length of a side of a foundation. So, you know, if if you've a hundred foot long foundation wall and for one foot of that wall, the grade is at, you know, minus 10 and the rest of it, it's up at zero. You would count the entire length of that wall at minus 10. It's really, it's really strange. Uh, it's unlike any other town I've had to deal with. And so it makes it really hard. Where you might have, you know, in in area of of a garage or basement or something like that where, you know, maybe it's 20 feet wide and it's, and it goes down to to slab elevation and everywhere else it you know, retaining walls up to the top and it's, and it, and it's just like, you know, just like the regular grade all the way around the house. Um, but you know, that, that because you're, you're counting it for the entire length of the wall that it's on. It really makes a big impact on the overall height that you're allowed to build. Um, where a lot of times, you know, from the street, it would make no difference at all, especially if it's a walkout in the back. You know, a a 35 foot high colonial um, from the front uh, doesn't look any different than a 35 foot foot colonial with a walkout basement in the back. You know, for for the, from the public view. Um, and so it, anyway, this is something that I would love to try to find a way to just recalculate, whether it's just using uh, average grade, not average lowest grade, um, would probably be the simplest thing.
That is, is a calculation of average grade, what you see most commonly?
Yes. Yes. You know, it's, it's either that or it's like, it's like elevations at the four corners. But the average grade would be simple since we already use an average grade, we just use a, an offset a sort of what we do like a weighted version. It would be easier just to say whatever the average grade is in that way for the length of that height. It would, it would affect the height, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like so it wouldn't penalize you so much, you know.
Um, so I guess if you have some languages that you're like at your finger.
Yeah, I have a version of that. I'll send that up over to you.
Um, so then the next one is actually page four, section 1.5 still definition of building line. And it right now, and this is, this is this is different than lot width. This is a definition of of measuring.
So the two things are defined, they're sort of self referential, one talks to the other. So to touch one is to touch the other, um, which is why we have to kind of do them in tandem. Cause they're, they're essentially the same definition, just measured at a different place.
Right, and I've got in my notes here that that would be a separate meeting for lot width and building line. Okay, so we will and to do a separate meeting to address the building line question and lot width and ahead of that meeting, we will hopefully have some language and uh, based on what your experience seems to make sense and see if we can kind of get everybody else to see the same logic.
Addie Mae, can I, um, I'm, I'm starting to do a little bit of um, categorization on the version that I have. I didn't realize this was in the files that Heidi had sent. Do you mind if I share my screen? Because I'm trying to like kind of categorize in real time and I think this would save us some time later going back.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, and if you're able to share and still.
Yeah, definitely can do that. Let me just find. Okay. So let me know when you can see it.
Do you have two monitors?
I do. That's why it's so much easier for me to share. So you got, when I'm looking I do. That's why it's so much easier for me to share. So you got, when I'm looking over here, I'm looking at you guys. And when I'm over here, I'm working on the shared screen.
Perfect. Cause I was like, I don't know how you're able to do this because.
No, it's, it's, yeah, only on Zoom. But so I sort of am. I've created a couple of categories of warrant articles, so some of them are obvious. Um, some of them are less obvious, like I highlighted this. I'm not sure if that's housekeeping or a decision point. Maybe it's housekeeping. Um, some of them I don't know what enough, like I don't know what what, uh, for example, D E F means. So, uh, you know, we can, maybe we can just go through and, and, and as we're talking, kind of assign if there's a particular category or a new category that needs to be created.
Yeah, I think having some of this will help us put it in bucket to kind of break it down, cause otherwise it is a little overwhelming. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we have like a wish list of like, you know, the average lowest grade is something that's not really housekeeping.
Okay, okay.
It would be like, it would be like an upgrade, you know?
Okay. Yep. And so that is, okay, I didn't catch the, what was the parking spaces? And I also, by the way, have have this open. So if that's helpful in any way, we can toggle back and forth, but I'll stick with this.
Spaces is pretty straightforward. We just have a minimum size requirement, um, which is fine. It doesn't really address what to do in the case of like an accessible parking space, but that is covered under, you know, other regulations. Um, so the question is, do we just want to refer to that other regulation?
So it's just housekeeping?
Yeah, I'd say that's housekeeping. Um, definition of setback, uh, yeah, the building code a while ago changed fence height needing permit to seven feet instead of six feet. And a lot of towns have since changed their zoning bylaw to also give the same, uh, uh, dimensional relief that fences normally get, just to increase it to seven feet as well, so that you don't have that that sort of conflict where like, you know, I don't need a building permit to put in a fence over seven feet tall or up to seven feet tall, but, but I, I have to comply with zoning in between six feet and seven feet. It's a weird thing. So, um. Anyway, that's a, that's a sort of easy.
Housekeeping to get in the line with building code. Okay, makes sense. And same thing goes with this definition of structure.
Uh, yes, exactly. That's just hopefully they try to clarify. Um, and it's, we've been sort of en- enforcing this anyway. But it'd be nice to have it official. Just because our definition of structure is very broad. It's pretty much anything, anywhere on the ground.
And so then I guess we've now, we've got the lot width and building line, page seven, sex, still under section one point five. And that's our, um, again, we've decided that's a separate meeting. But, um, would be really good if we could tackle those for this spring town meeting since they kind of been kicked the can down the road a lot, a lot. So, um. Alright, so then now we're into section two. Um, in our.
Just the legacy district, right?
Yeah.
Zoning district.
Yeah, does, doesn't exist on the map, got, got changed over to the EA at some point and, um. Yet we still refer to it as being a live zoning district in the bylaw.
These are all ADUs, right?
Yeah.
Uh, the short-term rental one, Chris, that might be more than.
Well, yeah, that's, that was, uh, where was that?
That's almost.
That was in rental of rooms, which is, which is an allowed use. We just wanted to make it explicit that short-term rentals were not allowed.
I think it's almost housekeeping.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure. Chris, would you say that's more housekeeping?
Say that's housekeeping.
Okay.
I think the next one, professional occupation is also more housekeeping.
Uh, that is an upgrades wishlist.
Okay.
I mean, I'd love it to be housekeeping, but I think that it's something that people will have an opinion about. So this is the.
Yeah, go ahead. You explained it in January, but go ahead and explain again.
Yeah, so the, the zoning board has in the past allowed, you know, contractors or other people that have equipment, trucks, et cetera, to get a special permit for professional occupation. The bylaw says actually that they're not supposed to have any outs- outside storage of equipment or materials or other things. Um, and so it's, the, the Z B A has sort of been going against its own rules um, in allowing those to happen. Um, I would just like to clean that up. So that it gives the Z B A the option, if they wish, to let somebody have storage, again, assuming that there's screening or, or, you know, adequate location where it's not going to be a problem, um, for the neighbors.
Now we're into section three point two fourteen.
This one's the one you just talked about with the daycares, right?
Yeah, and I, that would probably be the simplest thing to do would be to just create a new use category for childcare center slash daycare. And it's an allowed use because it's a Dover protected use. Um, and we can keep private school. Uh, as it is, just remove the daycare part of it.
And if you, to create a new use category, is there a we, that, do we have to go to town? Well, yeah, if anything zoning by law, we have to go to town meeting, but is there, um, beyond town meeting, a use category requirement? Like that we have to get a definition approved?
No, I think it would just be, you know, we'd have to figure out which sections would be impacted by that change. So there'd be like the use table would be changed. We probably have to add a, a definition or a description within the, um, the ca- the category of uses section. Hold on, I'm going to tell my children to stop playing the piano for a second.
I couldn't hear it, but then.
I'm hope, I'm hoping we can make a consent agenda for the housekeeping issues.
Yeah, that would be a good way to handle that. Um.
Cause we'll have had a hearing on it, public hearing on all of these things, but then I'm hoping that we can at a town meeting have a consent agenda for all of the housekeeping issues.
That'd be good, because otherwise you'd get bogged down and could kill the whole thing.
Right, right. And I, I don't think people are going to care. The A D U, they can vote, but it's by right. We, we have to comply. But that will be in it. And then I think the upgrade ones will be its own individual. And maybe there's a consent agenda for the upgrade too. I don't know. We can, we can, as it gets closer, we can see. The multi-dwellings, I think that's, um, also A D U.
It's both, I think it's both A D U and housekeeping, because it has an element where we allow it now within the open space, but we don't actually say that you're allowed to do it anywhere else in the bylaw. Um, so we have to change.
So.
It says it's prohibited.
The question then is, would it be, would it be better under a consent agenda for housekeeping? Or would it be bender, better as part of the A D U discussion?
I think it goes along with the A D U stuff.
Okay. If it, yeah, right. If it's like married, right, then we have to put it in the A D U one.
Alright, so then now we've got low or moderate income apartment review. So.
Yeah, that one I think is, is like a town council housekeeping. Um, I, I, from what Heidi and I looked at the other day, I have a feeling that that section is no longer applicable because the, the state law that probably created that, that section of bylaw for us is no longer in effect. It got replaced with forty B. So that, that may just be able to go away as like a housekeeping thing.
Oh, it, so that may not be tied to the A D U. It might be.
Right. That was just this weird, uh, you know, sort of extra requirement or, or option that you have for developing a, an affordable.
Okay.
Apartment, but, um, yeah, again, nobody's ever, I don't think, no one's ever done one. And then, um, it's, it's integrated at this point.
Well, could you have to, you'd have to do a deed restriction and then you would also have to do the lottery and advertising and do everything in accordance with, for, uh. Deed recorded affordable units and a lot of people, that's a lot of work for one person, for one reason.
Right. I don't remember what fourteen D E F is.
D, D E N F for all these definitions of apartments, which are no longer valid, like all the different things of the twelve hundred square feet, you know, the owner, it was all those things. Specifying it. So that's A D U.
Okay.
I just didn't start putting them all down. I was just lumping them all together that as a two twenty-five, two twenty there. Gone.
Twenty-eight offsite septic. EA only. This is when you mentioned this, Chris, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I mean, again, the port of health has their own regulations that get really in the weeds on when you can and can't put a septic knot on the same property. Um, and I'm not really sure why the zoning bylaw has anything to say about that when it's, it's fully regulated by the port of health. You know, we could, we could see if there's any reason it makes sense to keep it if council has a, has a thought about it, but, um. To me, it's, it's probably a, um, it's a housekeeping just to delete. Again, because we don't even regulate septics as a structure or a building or anything that zoning normally covers. So it's kind of an unusual thing, or it's not even a use.
And we don't have any ability to add it as a condition or we have no way of doing anything with it.
Right. It's not, yeah, it's, it's not really an enforceable thing by zoning. So I'm not sure why it's there, I guess is the question.
Okay. Heidi. You want to talk about the page sixteen?
Sure, outdoor entertainment, um. There are discrepancies here, but until we get our ruling from the court, I would not touch this. I think I'm just, I put it down here to note, we will have to address these at some point. I don't think it's this year.
And the same for the, the same for this one too, or?
No, that one is.
No, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's certainly doable. I, I, again, I just think that we've got some like probably pre Dover protecting kind of language in our bylaw that seems to still apply. But it, you know, you, you need to submit a screening plan to build any building within two hundred feet of a lot line on an agricultural property. What is the standard, you know? And, and what are we, and what is the application? It's not a site plan review. Um, so it doesn't really tell you what it is or how to do it. Um, it just says a, a screening plan shall be submitted to the planning board and approved. It's.
So does this go under housekeeping? Because I feel like
Yeah.
Farms are so controversial that someone might pull the consent. Pull it out of the consent just to ask more.
I mean, my feeling is that, is that it would be good to just delete that. You know, it's.
As a housekeeping item?
Yeah, like we don't need to be regulating beyond what we normally regulate. You know, or if, or if it's going to be site plan approval for that kind of thing, make it site plan approval, you know, we, which is a thing we already we already know what that is and that, and that has a process and it's not a special permit. And so we're allowed to do it. Um, but this sort of weird extra thing is, is confusing. Uh, four point one point one. It could be housekeeping. It could be an upgrade. I mean, it, to me, it's an upgrade. Um, it just expands that, um, setback exemption we have for sheds to cover any accessory structure, which makes sense to me. Why, why would, why do we make a di- difference between a shed and a, and a pergola? Um, you know, one can be twenty feet closer to the lot line and the other one can't be. It's kind of weird. So, um.
Sorry, to back up, um, on seven, page seventeen, table of use. We didn't put that down, but that really is going to be housekeeping, because it's going to be, whatever we decide is all going to be just automatically incorporated and updated as a reference.
Yeah. Although we, you may want to break that out. If we're going to do like three different warrants. Um, you're going to, we're going to want to make one table of use change for each associated warrant. But we don't accidentally change the table in a way that maybe gets voted down.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So it's A D U and then housekeeping, right?
Yeah.
That's it, right? Cause the daycare is, the daycare is one is, goes to the daycare thing, which is housekeeping.
Yep.
And then the A D U, okay.
And then we're probably going to have to do the three A article before this, because that, those.
Oh, three A, that's the other one.
Right, but that, because we'll have to incorporate what, if that gets approved, we have to incorporate all that things into our table of use. So it's probably going to have to be that if it got voted down, then we have to amend this.
Right.
And not put it in, but.
Can the three A include a table of use at it?
Probably, yeah.
So that it's not a two-step process? It's just a one-step process?
I think that, I think that would work. Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if we're breaking it out separate now. We down to schedule of dimension, dimensional requirements.
And that's lot width and whatever I had up here, right?
Yeah, that's part of that lot with building line question.
This one, housekeeping or is it A D U?
A D U.
Yeah.
Right now we just allow one and so.
You're allowed more than one by right.
We allow more than one if you have enough lot area to show that you have two lots or three lots, or you know, however many lots you would need to have that many dwellings. Um, but obviously the, the A D U situation will change that.
The dwellings in the business district is still, I, I just wanted to read that section more to decide is that still valid, what we're saying? And based on what has, so A D U question again, I guess would be on that one.
Yeah, what we require, is it a special permit? For, for single families in the, in the G B zone, is that right?
I think possibly. Unless it's part of the planned development units.
We need to pull it up now.
Here's dwellings in business districts. Is this it?
Yeah. Basically it says unless it allow, it allows for one acre, you can have a dwelling only if it's on a one acre lot.
Which, which is interesting, because then it means that, I guess, the G B zone is zoned for single family effectively. So can you put, can you put an accessory unit behind roses? You, you, I don't know.
Mi- maybe not by right.
Right.
Right, but I think we have to wait for E O H L C's interpretation on some of this.
Yeah.
So would that go with A D U? Is the, or that would the changes be tied to A D U?
Think so. That's what, that's the area that's going to get affected.
Yep.
Okay. Um, is this farm building thing tied to this farm building thing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
They're two separate things. They're two separate extra requirements we make for farm buildings.
Okay.
And again, it, they don't, they don't make a lot of sense, um, considering that we're supposed to sort of do, do anything we can to allow farm buildings to get built.
The next one is a housekeeping. Um, it actually is the reverse of what is written.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, we exempt those structures in the previous category and then we require them to get a special permit in the, in the next one.
Okay, that's just a word change.
Yeah, yeah.
Oof, at least there's one easy one on here.
Delete the word no and we're all set. Yeah.
I kept reading around, guys, like, of course, this doesn't make sense. Not at all. So that one is an A D U question.
Yeah.
And again, the next one, same thing, and that's the town council has to, I think possibly weigh in on what's a dwelling count.
Now, what I did not see in here, and it might just be an upgrade wishlist. So this is not everything, right, that we're talking about for the zoning bylaws, or is it?
Oh, it is right now.
Um, anti-segmentation?
I did not put that in. That would be a whole separate one. I, I went by, this was just our existing bylaw changes. Anti-segmentation is not in our existing bylaws. That would be. Anti-segmentation is not in our existing bylaws. That would be a whole new bylaw. So yeah, that would have to be a whole separate warrant article.
Okay, so we have other upgrade wishlist items that are not on this spreadsheet.
Right, it's not even an upgrade, it's a wishlist.
Okay.
So based on how many things we have going to town meeting, I kind of felt we're going to have to really prioritize what we want to do and whether there's an appetite to add anti-segmentation as a whole another separate warrant article on it or not.
So would a, would anti-segmentation have to be its own, it would be a brand new bylaw rather than?
It would be an amendment. It could be amendment into our inclusionary zoning.
Inclusionary zoning, right.
Yeah, so I guess we could put under that, just put under an amendment there.
But, but there's another list of topics. Right, like it, like B E S S is on it and groundwater protection and, you know, like bylaws that we've talked about adding. There's another list of those. I'm looking for it because I thought I had it, um. I thought I had, uh it in a folder here, but I don't see it, um. So maybe I'm just questioning if anti-segmentation belongs on a different list rather than the reason I brought it up is because as I was reading the multifamily overlay district bylaw, it seemed like there was some applicable language in there that I was like, oh, actual anti-segmentation language that could be a starting point if we were trying to do that. And I just hadn't seen any actual language to that effect in the past, so.
Right, well, see, it was something I saw that you could, the same owner had to something about keeping the same owner. Or the same owner could not redivide the property, was that the one?
No, it says no project may be phased solely to avoid the provisions of section X, right? So it's kind of vague language that probably like wouldn't I don't know if it would stand up in court, right? So I don't know. Um, but I, I just hadn't seen it actually written in a bylaw before, and that was made me think. But it is complicated. It's not, it's not housekeeping. Well, I guess the question is, if, if it's closing a loophole, is that housekeeping, right? It's not like
It's cleanup in a way.
It's cleanup, right? It's not like adding a whole new thing if it's that mild, if it's something of that nature.
I think it's worth putting on this list because it kind of goes hand in hand with ADU, especially if there is some language that somewhat echoes that concept in the ADU, then it's actually easier to explain when we, why we're adding it also to the inclusionary zoning potentially. I mean, we'll have to see if we can come up with the right language, but um, it kind of, I think it fits in here because it's in the same theme.
So, but it goes in a couple of places, then you're saying, right? Like, it would go under inclusionary zoning and ADU.
Yeah.
So it would be a house, would it be housekeeping for inclusionary zoning?
For inclusionary zoning, yeah, I think it's so kind of missing language. So I, I think of it as housekeeping.
Okay.
And we're not, you know, we're basically trying to ensure that the language that the inclusionary zoning functions the way it's intended and so that to me is a housekeeping item. We're not coming up with something new, really. Not changing how it's used. We're just trying to ensure that it's used the way we went to town meeting and got approval for.
Right, and so then this, I just don't like know exactly where that would be, so I'll make a highlight there, but. Okay.
What was the groundwater protection when you mentioned Steph?
Um, it's kind of always been on the laundry list, um. Frank, do you have that, you wrote out a list of zoning rules and regs, do you remember that? Um, you were taking notes at the meeting and you combined a bunch of, you, you made a list. Um, and I thought but, and I thought I saved it here, but I don't see it, um. Oh, I think you sent it to me in an email. Let me, let me hunt around a little bit for it. I thought it was, I thought we had a list of potential bylaws. And I thought that was on it. But I could be wrong.
I was sending and forwarding around something that Frank put together.
Yep.
And I'm trying to remember what day it was.
Uh, it was around April, because that's
Late spring, okay.
When I made my brainstorm list, according to my file.
I can find something.
You know what, it was on a Google Doc, because I was looking for it, he said, try planning for topics and priorities, but I can't access Google Docs.
I can. What is the date of it?
Uh, this was, I had it on five, seven.
Okay. Just trying to.
Heidi, did you want to touch on solar less than two hundred fifty kilowatt, but maybe bigger than a residential sized system? You know, we, we sort of have this blank spot in the bylaw right now. Again, just to sort of like throwing topics out there if we're sort of thinking about things.
Yeah, it's kind of a gap.
Yeah.
What's, what's that? I missed it.
We have, you know, regulations for large-scale ground mount solar, but we have this sort of in-between size of like, you know, what you're going to put in your backyard up to what is a, a pretty big system. There's really no regulations, you know, and if it's less than two hundred fifty kilowatts, it's like do what you want. You know, and it's, and it's now it's over protected use as well, so we can't say no to the to the use. So the question is, do we want to have any regulation specific to sort of medium-sized solar systems that are on the ground? Even just setback requirements or?
Our screening or something.
Screening or right, lot clearance, uh, allow, you know, allowable amount of lot clearance for these kind of things. Who knows, you know, um, but it seems like it's a place where our biologist is silent on it. And yet it's, it's an allowed use now.
And do we have regulations on smaller uses? You said there's a gap in between.
Well, at a certain point, you know, when they're like accessory to a single-family dwelling, then they're pretty well covered by the bylaw as accessory structures, so they have, you know, the normal setbacks apply. You know, but at a certain point, they get bigger than what is truly accessory to a house. They're not connected to the electric service through the house. They're connected directly to the grid. Um, you know, they, they're kind of a freestanding thing that's making power that's not associated with the fact that there's a house on the property anymore. It's just, it's, it's its own little power station. Um, but it's not big enough to qualify for the large-scale um, regulations.
Steph, I just sent it to you.
Okay.
And I now is just able to find a copy I'd saved. So April ninth was when Frank did this. I mean, yeah, April ninth, but he sent it to me on May seventh, I just forwarded to you.
Yeah, I've got, can you guys see it on my screen? I think I set it up so you, I can do the screen, so. So that, yeah, there's a lot on here. So this, this one's on Chris's list.
Yeah.
This one's on our, you know, short-term agenda. Thanks to Frank. This one's is largely what we're talking about right now.
Chris Kenny, yeah, not Kenny.
I'll take, I'll take whatever spelling you want to give me, that's fine.
It's a Google Doc, right? I'll just change it.
There you go.
Uh, and so I, ground protection bylaw is on there, there, Heidi, this was sort of, um there keeps, there keeps there is ongoing discussion in the master plan about a groundwater protection bylaw. It's, it's part of, one of the reasons that the groundwater protection committee was reconstituted two years ago. I think the thought behind this, the spirit of this focuses around farm pond. And potential regulations, but also could focus on areas where we need to preserve a particular groundwater aquifer that might be like the only one of the only places in town where there could be a public water supply in the future, should that ever be needed. So we've, the groundwater protection committee has never dived into this. I can't even see you guys anymore. I don't know where you went. You like disappeared on me. Um.
Where's the hangar?
I can hear you, yes. Now I see you guys. Um, the groundwater protection committee has never sort of, sort of dived into it. I think it feels, it, it it lacks direction and I so it's sort of something that's would have, as a zoning bylaw, would have to be sort of sponsored by the planning board, so to speak. Um, but it have to be done in conjunction.
Chris, is this something that you're seeing in, um, I don't know, where you, did you see something like this in, I mean south, they've got a lot of wells as well, um.
Yeah, I mean, there's
Bylaws?
There's some really aggressive groundwater bylaws in some towns, but a lot of them are, are based upon the fact that they have, you know, municipal wells. And they've basically made the whole town a groundwater district because of that, you know, and, and um since we don't have that situation, I'm not really sure what the mechanism is to decide where, you know, where do you make the line where you have to protect it or not, um. You know, and again, it could be, it could be the idea, like you said, of the future. You know, municipal water supply location, I guess, um.
Or it could be townwide, since everyone is on their own private wells, right? So like in the interest of public health on a, from a private well, there could be a townwide.
Typically though, I mean, like, you know, the actual requirements within the zones are, you know, sometimes it's, again, where it's, where it's, if it's part of a zoning bylaw, the things that, that it's regulating are like uses within a zone. Um, you know, you can't have a, a, a vehicle repair shop, um, you know, within a, the whatever, it's a hundred feet of the radius of the thing, or a thousand feet or whatever it may be. So it comes down to like restricting the types of things that you can do on the properties. Um, which Sherburne already kind of does, because we're almost all residential. I'm not sure what the again, as a zoning bylaw, I'm not sure what the, what, what the zoning could do to, to make it more uh, protected, you know what I mean? I think the Board of Health might have some ability to add some groundwater clauses to some of the stuff that they can regulate, but like for zoning purposes, I just don't really know. I don't know if it would be very effective, I guess. You know, I don't think we, I don't think we'd be saying you can't build a house. Um, and that's pretty much what we build in Sherburne, so. You know, what is the thing that we don't want you to do to protect our groundwater? And is it something that, that zoning regulates? I just, I don't know, I don't know if that's correct or not, you know?
Yeah, and I wasn't involved in the prior iterations, the prior generations of discussions on this, and so nobody on the groundwater committee sort of has the history. I'm trying to remember who even brought it up in the master planning effort. Do you remember, Arimay? Where it came from?
I, I, I don't, I mean, I know that there was some I, I'm like in the early two thousands and maybe before, some discussion on making the whole town a protected zone, but then you run into the unintended consequences of then being so restrictive. Either overriding things that Board of Health already is covering and just complicated and, and creating something that you can't even enforce. Or, um, you know, the, we, we, we like having a gas station in town, we like having an auto mechanic in town. You could make the whole town a water district doesn't, a protected zone doesn't, I think that was the thinking, it doesn't make sense, but uh, uh, beyond that, I don't, I've never seen any actual zoning language.
No, and, and so the, you know, the approach that we came up with would just be to see like, what do other towns regulate and look at examples of uh, but it just seemed so broad, and I think we were sort of grasping at straws to understand like why, why was this in here? What was, was there like a stated intent?
Medfield has a pretty heavy-duty groundwater bylaw, if I remember correctly, um.
Which town?
Medfield.
Just about their areas where their wellhead would be.
Yeah, they have a lot, they have a lot of groundwater issues in town, and they, and they've made their, their you know, restrictions are, are you know, they limit, I think, like the amount of lot coverage that you're allowed to disturb, you know, they, 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 they kind of get into the weeds a little bit on the, on the zoning end of things, just beyond just like what the uses of the property are. So we may, maybe we could take a look at what they're doing, um, just as a sort of example of like, how are they regulating this?
I just want to make sure we're not spreading ourselves too thin, because we.
Yeah, and I don't want to go down in the weeds here. It's not, it's definitely not like, wasn't at the highest priority. I just sort of was using it as an example of other things that are on our radar screen.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise.
E S S is worth looking at sooner than later. Just knowing that again, where, where forty A made solar a by right use. And Sherburne is ripe for that kind of development, where we have a lot of properties that, you know, they don't perk for construction necessarily for the septic. But you've got big land areas that could easily become solar fields. Um, and have a lot of, you know, E S S type, type storage on site, and we don't have anything. It speaks to that. Again, it's a complicated issue. But, um if that may be worth trying to put something together on, I don't know, or, or at least seeing what other towns are doing.
Yeah, I, I do know Frank has, has worked on something, and we looked at it at last meeting, and there were some homework issues that he was going to get some answers on and then come back to us with, and I know Heidi had also um, attended a presentation that she was going to talk about in her town planner report on B E S S, so it is something that's on our plate. And I'm sure that we will be looking to you for guidance, Chris. I get some language and kind of make sure that I don't know, unless anyone has any questions, like Frank, do you have any questions for Chris specific to B S, B E S S, um, that maybe?
Have you been looking at any of the B E S S, um, bylaws and, um?
I've been to a number of trainings on the building and fire side of things, just on sort of the developing story of how do you permit these and you know, deal with them in the real world. Not on, not so much on the zoning side, again, because, because of the you know, the protected status of solar now. It's tricky, but I think that, you know, there's room in there to have some regulation, whether it just be something related to setbacks. Um, separations, I mean, that's really the, and, and that's kind of the big thing for the fire department, is just the layout of the site and the separation between things to prevent a, a, a fire from going from bad to really, really bad. And zoning can help with that. So I think there is uh, an opportunity to do something that would maybe, um you know, at least be a starting point for this, but yeah, I, I mean, I can look into what is going on in some of these other towns. I know that it's been more reactionary than, than.
I've been doing that already, um, and if, if you want to, you know, circle back on the work that I've done, this, that's.
I'd love, I'd love to, yeah, let's, let's have a little sidebar.
I'll, I'll, I'll share with you the, uh, the, the draft bylaw that I put together right now, and it's based on Medfield and Carver's, um, bylaws.
Midway.
Midway.
Sorry. Midway and Carver's bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so just looking at this list, so as much as there's a lot of items that we definitely talked about, I think a lot of these items on this list, as far as the zoning, actually are encompassed on this Excel spreadsheet. So I think we've actually got a pretty holistic comprehensive list of items, and it's helpful now, Heidi, uh, staff that you've kind of put them in different buckets to address.
Is this a housekeeping one, Chris? Or is that a weaponry wishlist?
It's, it's, yeah, it's kind of both. I mean, it's one of the, again, it's one of those things where the state law changed, and we didn't really modify our bylaw too much to deal with it. You know, previously, when it wasn't a Dover protected use, the sort of mid-sized ones weren't really permitted. Um, unless it was an accessory to your house, you weren't, you know, you, you didn't get to put a solar system in, but now, now they're an allowed use, so. Have you seen, I don't know, is it an upgrade or is it housekeeping? It's kind of both.
So kind of stupid question, I probably should know, but, um Dover protected use, is that a building code reference, or is that a?
No, that's just a blanket term for forty A, section three. Is it everything, everything within forty A, section three that gets special zoning exceptions gets called a Dover amendment protected use?
Is it, is it from the state regulations?
Yeah, so right, and it, it goes, it goes back to whenever it was in the seventies or eighties when Dover tried to stop a church from, from being built in town anyway, um.
All right, no, that makes.
But yeah, it's the same, it's the same regulation, the same one that protects churches now protects solar systems, protects daycares, protects, you know, all these other different things um, from, from zoning, so.
All right, so I think our next steps will be taking these. All right, so I think our next steps will be taking these different buckets and figuring out where. Which meetings we're gonna address each bucket and also coming up with, um, you know, actually then getting. You know, since we'll have them in buckets, so take the housekeeping definition type of stuff and address that at one meeting and have that language worked out ahead of the meeting. So um, we can come back and I know we've got. We'll figure out which of us are kind of working on different sections, I know, um.
I have a practical question. Um, for the board, how do you folks want to see proposed changes? Do you want to see like, you know, annotated bylaw with like red lines and notes added? Do you want to see like a clean version of the old one and a clean version of the new one side by side? Do you have preference?
We will have to have the annotated one, you know, crossed out for town meeting.
Right.
Um, uh, so, but honestly, both, because I find sometimes at town meeting, you want a clean copy too, so they can see what it ends up. Because sometimes it's so hard and convoluted to read, but we do have to publicize that version.
Do we have, um, we have everything in Word yet?
The problem is all this is being codified and it's supposed to be coming out any day, so that's probably going to change.
All the numbering.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think once we have it in Word in an editable format, then we just, we would just turn on track changes and use annotations, right? Just for the purpose of like having discussions, because you can always show original or turn or not show the track changes, show the final. Right? And and you can look at it in multiple different ways, but I think track changes is the best tool for that.
Okay, good.
Sorry, my internet cut out for a minute there, but um. How would we circulate this document that Steph has modified?
Steph can email all of us a copy of it.
It's not, it's not discussion and it uh, it it's just informational.
Informational, yeah, or she can send it to me and I can send it out if that's an issue.
Either way, but as you know, far as from the board, if you ever, if you're, if you're, if there's ever a document that you edited that we've talked about in meeting. That then is just you're sharing. That's, that's what, um, I don't know.
The discussion was all in the public meeting.
Right, the discussion was in public meetings, so you're just sharing the actual document. You can feel free to, you don't have to. Ask Heidi, I mean, you can go ahead and share it with the board, you all, we all have each other's email.
Just don't comment on it.
Yeah, or 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 make some kind of a statement asking for feedback on something.
Right.
Yeah, this is helpful. Thank you, Steph. Um, so I think, I think we've gotten as far with that as we can, as far as what we have on our agenda. And I think the next item was, um. Let's see, talking about the MBTA three A zoning update, Heidi, do you want to?
Not too much has changed since last week. Uh, waiting for town council to get back on the bylaw, which I did send you a copy of what the consultant had put together for the bylaw. Uh, and I'm, until I get the town council review back, I can't move forward with that. Um, I just did also send you an example of the spreadsheet that he puts together, that's going to be in our application. I did question him again about the parcel of up to six acres. And he felt that, yes, he's talked to EO HLC, they have said this is something they're willing to accept. And he said, the only way we can do it is, the only way they're going to put something in writing is by doing our pre-application, by submitting it and getting it back. Said unfortunately, that's the only definitive way we're going to know, because they can say something and then they might change their mind, but. That's what the pre-application is for. Uh, as far as when Marion had concerns about whether it can be two six acre parcels, this just says. Three A is up to six acres, so once six acres is done, that's it. You can do a three acre parcel and a separate three acre parcel, two parcels that way, but you're only allowed a total of six acres in this zone. So he did not see that as being a potential conflict that someone could develop two six acre parcels. Because he feels the bylaw just does not allow it, it's maxed. So as soon as I can get this back, I'm hoping and I'm, I will ping town council again by Thursday. And hope to get it in by Friday to uh, EO HLC.
I had some questions about it, um. Really just one, well, a couple of little edits that I can just send to you, Heidi.
Okay.
But um, the question I had was about the dimensional standards, the table of dimensional standards.
What pay, what?
Chapter three, it's on the third page, just that it's the only table in the document. It's, I'm, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a hard copy because it's what. Was in front of me from when you handed out to us yesterday. Or last week, but um, you know, the frontage and the side setbacks and the rear setbacks are like really small. And I get that that is what you need to do to be able to fit fifteen units on an acre, right? So I get that, but I'm curious kind of where they came from. They're significantly smaller than what's in. You know, our other areas of town, like the open space subdivision or the multifamily, you know, those kinds of. The development types that we regulate.
Is this a, Heidi, I'm assuming this dimensional standard table is that is somehow from the state bylaw?
That's what I was asking.
Like, is that, is, we didn't create this, this, I'm assuming this came from their bylaw because like, like Steph said, there's no other way to fit fifteen per acre.
Right, I will have to check if that's explicitly in there. I don't see anything explicit, but EO HLC, that may have come from EO HLC.
Okay, because it does say minimum open space is twenty five percent, which is good.
Yeah.
And consistent with our multifamily requirements, so I figured that that may have come from our multifamily requirements, but I'm not really sure. I was just sort of wondering.
And and my guess is this is, you know, I had sent them what Gino had submitted initially too. So that may have come from that initial application. I'll, I'll try and research if I can figure out where that came from.
Okay, and then another consideration is that I think our, I think it was our open space subdivision also had setbacks for like, um. Uh, minimum spaces between buildings, minimum distance between buildings or minimum distance from an internal road. And those are not on here and it, um, they don't have to be, I'm just, I'm just want to make sure that it was an intentional decision, not. To include them.
I am not sure because I don't know if they can meet the density requirement with what our open space subdivision is.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I get that. Um, but but just having some. Like, for example, the open space subdivision says sixty foot from a sides for a side setback, and this says ten feet for a side setback, right? So like, is there like something we want in there? Maybe there's not, um. And then there's a couple of editorial things that I'll send you.
Okay, yeah, send me the questions and I will try and find out where that came from.
Yeah, there's still a couple of lingering references to mixed use. In the site, the other, the other sort of like more significant thing was that in the site plan review section, which is the second to last page. Um, it lists what you need to include in a site plan that you submit, what like what you need to show in the site plan. And it's not, it's not fully consistent with. Our other site plan. Reviews, unless maybe it's referenced, included by reference, but like, so for example, like. I don't know, I don't know who has it handy, but it says. Site plan must show buildings, vehicular access, vehicular circulation, stormwater management utilities and landscape treatments. And in other parts of our bylaws where we have site play a plan review, we have signage, lighting, parking, pedestrian access and egress. Like, there's a laundry list of other things that are on a site plan review.
Okay.
In five point three point one that are not also in this requirement for site plan review.
Right, could you send me this or could we have a conversation about it and I'll?
Yeah, I'll, I'm sure you you gave this to us. No, you handed us this because it was hot off the press. Did you email us this also?
I think I did send that to you.
The September ninth draft?
Yes.
Was emailed yesterday or this morning, I'm sorry.
This morning.
Yeah, because I.
Oh, I see it. Okay, yep, I see it. So I will mark that up.
Okay, okay, that'd be great. Because that's some of the things I'll ask council, does it have to refer? To our site plan review? How much do they have to line?
Right, okay.
I mean, we. Probably. Site, site plan review is. A rules and regs, correct?
Well, there's a site plan review.
Well, in our open space, it's pretty.
It's pretty detailed.
Yeah.
Well, it's weird, it's kind of tucked away in a very, and like, I'm just now starting to get familiar with the zoning bylaws. So this is like all kind of fresh for me, but I'm going to share my screen again. So we have. On in five point three point one, which is under special permits in the business districts, here, I'll blow this up. And so this is where, when you're doing like.
That might be the difference because it's in the business district where you're going to have all the signs and the other.
It might be.
The other ones in the residential district.
Yeah, that's possibly true, but it just also seems like, you know, some of the things like lighting and parking and pedestrian would still be good to know. For a high density development.
Absolutely.
Um, so I just kind of compared this list with the list that's in the narrative in the draft and. But again, you know, this is a specific preliminary site plan for special permits and business districts, and I don't, I didn't reference the rules and regs.
Right, and right now, we've just got within the, um, this only references five point seven. Point seven through five point seven point eight.
I wonder what that is.
Residential, right, so I guess would we then also in order to? If we really wanted to include those, then that would mean also updating our residential.
Well, five point seven point seven and.
Yeah, what is five point seven?
It's, it's, it's this bylaw, it's just above on this bylaw, so, so five point six. And then we jump to five point eight in our current bylaws, this chapter three A is five point seven. So five point seven point seven and.
We, we did, like, that number that we decided to create when we, uh, section five point seven, yes, we did, sorry. Sorry, but it could all potentially change with the codification process.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Okay, right. Back to Chris Canny's original point, we have so much convoluted stuff in here, and housekeeping would be in order, okay.
We don't like to tidy up much, we just add more stuff every year or or ten, it's great.
Okay, so I think that's good, we've got some, again, some. Good questions to just find out the origins on that dimensional chart. And just kind of make sure that we all know, especially if we have to go to town meeting, it's always good to be clear on where things came from and why things were decided the way they were. So again, Steph, as usual, thanks for digging into the weeds and making sure we're well prepared. I think on that note, are we, anything else related to zoning that we feel we have? Haven't discussed and is worth discussing tonight? Otherwise, I would say move on to town planner report. Unless there's any other boards and committee reports.
Well, I'm just wondering again what next steps might look like. If if we're going to put this into a Word document, we 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 each going to take sections to look at under a certain category or?
Yeah, so let's see, um. Steph's going to share around the um, zoning and actually. Steph, before you share it around, I'm wondering, is it makes sense to chunk, to group? On that spreadsheet, even like right now, they're in zoning article. Number order, I mean, not, yeah, they're in zoning order.
To me, it makes it easier to find them that way. But we could always sort, I can put a filter on that column so that anyone can just select ADU and just see those together.
Separate uh, um, worksheets that had them uh, filtered by different man also.
Yeah.
Second page that put in order of of that particular column instead of the in order by. Is only by law column.
Yeah, so, but you've, I mean, you've done a lot with it, Steph, if you want to just share it around as is and we can or share it. I I'm happy to also split it into different worksheets, like leave what you've got as the first worksheet and then we'll have the sec, the basically three buckets. Three extra worksheets with the.
So let me just share, let me just share what I did, just so that you guys can maybe use it if you want to. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
I just put a filter up here so you can just drop down and on and say, I want to look at everything that has the word ADU in it and pick those, right? Or you can look at only the things that are upgrade wishlist, or you can look at all of them and take off the upgrade wishlist. Or look at only the lot width ones, you know, so you can sort it and see it in any, and then you just select all when you want to see everything again. So it prevents the need from having to like create three separate tabs with the same information.
Excel than I am.
I, white, I do, I use Excel a lot, so hopefully that's helpful, but we can, I can definitely break it into three separate tabs. Stop sharing.
I have one major concern, from what I'm hearing tonight, there are a bunch of changes that may be happening to this bylaw for the MBTA. You know, if you're talking about looking at different densities, um, the open space definition setbacks. I'm concerned then that this cannot be sent in this week. Because it's going to require another meeting back with you to have all of you approve. The changes that we're now going to research and incorporate. And that means it's going to put our application off until. Beginning October. Um, so it's kind of like a little too late, like some of this, I feel like this should have been done. We're, we're, we're using, we were using the bylaw that was done initially and we were only building up the one that was done last year. So these are great questions, but.
Okay, so let's take a step back here.
Yeah, I'm okay to submit it.
Seven point five, the dimensional standard, I think, I, I think we're good to submit as is, I think most though that we should understand. We, we should go back and just make sure we all know for town meeting or for, or just actually before we started talking about this in January at. Um, hearings, we should know why more wasn't put into this. I don't think we could put more into this and. I think what we have is good, we just need to make sure we understand, we do our homework and understand fully the the origins on that emotional standard.
I don't think there's any comments that I made that would preclude us from submitting this as a draft.
Okay.
Like, we can just keep track of like, oh, yeah, when we do the site plan, we want to think about these other things, and that can be a tweak after we get a ruling.
All right, as long as that's fine, I just didn't, you know, I was hearing some different things, so I just want to make sure.
I have a question, is this, um. The ten foot setback on the sides and the rear is only when it's abutting of business use.
Oh, yeah.
I don't really even think that that's going to be applicable for the location for where this is, right? I mean, we're up against residential all around. So it's, they're going to have thirty foot sides and rear setbacks. So really, the only thing that's unusual is the front yard setback from Sherburne, I mean, we're normally we're sixty feet and now we're at twenty. Um, but the side yards will still be thirty and the rear will still be thirty, so. Effectively, you're still going to have a reasonable amount of width where the buildings are.
Yep.
I think the mixed use reference is definitely something we can take out, I mean, that's a housekeeping one and we're not going to have a mixed use district.
I mean, if we want to clean that up, there's two locations where I found that.
Okay.
I thought I saw there was several of them actually in there. Especially towards the end.
I just saw two, but.
I'll, I'll search the, I'll search those terms.
You can just do control F and look for a mixed use.
Right.
And that, yep.
Yep. And then what about this, the parking, the signs, the lighting, the fact that that's not?
I don't think that's pertinent to EO HLC or, well, it's, it's a question. Is, is it, are the elements that we put into our site plan review going to be scrutinized by EO HLC or? Attorney General's Office? E H L C or Attorney General's Office?
If they find, if they feel it's limiting, yes, but I don't think this is necessarily
I don't think it's limiting because what, yeah, because all it says is the site plan shall show.
Right, I don't think that's limiting.
Right. So I don't think that making a small change like that would.
No, and that, that can be done then after, like on our second view.
Yep. And then the numbering.
Before we do the public hearing, we'd want to, whatever we get into the public hearing, but hopefully we'll get this feedback before.
Yeah.
It does have the clause and other information commonly required by municipality for site plan review, which would cover whatever else you'd normally ask for.
But we should, but we should say it in the bylaw, right? I mean, but yes, I agree. There was that, that clause.
You know, I think there should be other things that really describe the nature of a project um that you would see as part of an, a, a, another um, submission requirement elsewhere, which would be a grading plan.
Nebby with stormwater grading.
But really how the buildings are sighted and how, what the cut and fill looks like, because you, you, you could have a high point on a site with a building place on that high point and it would loom over a butter's properties, right?
Possibly, but if it's zoned for that, that I mean, I don't know. Yeah, well, I mean, look, they, they made it so that yes, so the local zoning applies, applies, but um, and so our thirty five foot rule would apply unlike a forty B, which the forty five, the thirty five foot rule does not apply. So um, for, for building height.
Hey, sorry about that. My internet froze again. These little pods I have.
I, I think we you know, there, there are reviews and then there's things that you know, the topography of the land is a hill and ledge, then um, but we've zoned this and said it's by right zoned for multifamily.
Right, but there, there, there may be a choice of how the building is sighted within the site. And I, and I think it's important to see the relationship of the building to surrounding sites.
Yeah, I mean, but we don't have a authority to approve or modify a project, right? This is a by right.
No, but that should be part of the submission requirements, right?
But they do, I mean, when they do a site plan and they present renderings, there's usually a, an overview of the project and where it sits on the property.
But sometimes testing the grading information, just you know, where are the high points on the site?
But can you do anything about it? I think what Steph's saying is because it's by right, even if they put it down on it. I don't know if we're going to have any teeth to say, no, we don't want it sighted there.
I mean, that might be the case for everything here though, but I ju, I, I don't, I don't disagree that like, I just don't, I don't know enough about the site plan review process to know whether it's asking too much to have a grading plan and, or a cut and fill plan at this stage of development. Um, so I just, I don't know if we normally see that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just, again, n- not every site is flat.
Yeah.
And Yeah, it's, it's a good consideration. Just, I don't, I just don't know if, if
I mean, thi- this particular site is probably flat. I don't know enough about it. We're really just talking about this specific site.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not
It's fairly flat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is why not butter is either. So yeah, it's probably a move.
No, and we're talking a six acre portion out of the twenty one.
Yeah.
So it's um Okay, so I will look for the reference on mixed use to edit those out and then essentially
I did a control F. There were seven uh, um.
Seven references?
Yep.
Okay. And then um, then I will soon as I get the town council's feedback on this, we'll just go ahead, submit and see what we get for comments.
Sounds good.
Okay. Town planner report?
Yep.
All right, so I have attended a battery energy storage system talk last week and then I had one today on agro voltaics, which was um, and actually more fascinating than I expected. Uh, but the battery energy storage system one, there were some interesting things that came out of it. And of course, I can't, there was no PowerPoint yet distributed and I'm waiting to get that and I will definitely send you the link on it and um, PowerPoint on it. Um, what really came out of it is they're saying that what so many things, I, I don't know, Adam, Adam or Steph, do you have any of the comments of slides that I had sent?
Is this um, is this the slides that were, that, that can't talk?
They're just in the word document. I was trying, I had to take pictures. Uh, no.
Yes, this is it, Heidi.
Okay.
Scroll through, I think pa- uh, page twenty six was one that was
Okay.
Um, okay, going, keep scrolling, hi, uh, staff if you'll.
Great. Yes, this is a thank you. So they talked about um, the bands, the moratorium, as well as what's done. What's interestingly, Sherbin was mentioned in it um, that they said, you know, that the AGO disapproved ours, but it really was only a section of ours, but they're trying to say that you cannot limit them. Um, and there was a slide before this one uh, that had it talked about uh, right there. The energy, something, something board and the DPU can exempt projects from local zoning for large scale facilities. So basically whatever we have, even if we zone something, they can put something in our land if the DPU has decided that this is in the public interest to protect where necessary. So it's very disheartening to see that that the state can essentially rule for an energy company or something on there. Um, and then they also talk about later on.
But, but Heidi, on the, on the, on the opposite side, that's, that's a state overriding, but if you have a private developer, then um, you know, at least we'll have some um language in place with, with a bylaw. And, and hopefully that if, if the state did override it, they would look at our transfer station and in that area, which is kind of the place we would want it anyway, it makes the most sense to have it in, and we have the space for it there.
Yeah, no, it, it doesn't mean you can't, but also what they say is at the end of this presentation, they mentioned that they are going to be setting, they're hiring people, they're creating the staff and they're going to be coming up with some new regulations. I think if you can go to the end of this uh, Steph.
This was a little bit different. I think it didn't actually say this, the slide that you had um.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, it didn't.
A little bit different.
Yes, okay, so the next
That way one there, you, you sure for mine?
That note, that was one that gave the timeline. So the next slide down. Steph?
No, it's, it just, it's just the end.
Right, but that one talked about how, what the state's doing, that they are going to be strengthening their guidance. And then
If there was another slide you sent me, I can pull it up.
That's okay. It just, it just says that they're going to be starting this in early twenty twenty five of, of creating this group or division that's going to be studying this and they're going to be coming out with further, further guidance. So the one concern I have is if they're going to be coming out with fur- further guidance, I want to make sure that our bylaw will be um, in sync with this. And it was just something I wanted to bring up to people's minds that if we're going to are getting our bylaw done by January, February timeframe and they're coming, starting to come out with guidance in early twenty twenty five, there may be some conflicts.
Hmm.
And whether it's worthwhile waiting for their guidance and going to town meeting with something, because I, I, I'm concerned that by April and submitting it to the AGOs, we could already be submitting something that's going to fail. But at the same time, it may not. So just up to you guys to decide, but I want to make sure you knew that was coming. Um, the agri voltaic one was, was definitely again, if I can start getting into that one.
Okay, I'm interested in Frank's thoughts on that, just because I know Frank, you've put the lion's share of work into this, like if, if we were to, I guess the challenge is if early twenty twenty five holds, then we, then the town approves a bylaw that's already potentially in conflict with guidance.
Yeah, uh, it does make sense to uh, to bring it forward if it's going to um, kind of conflict with what uh, with guidance is and what, what this, what's going to pass. Um, you know, I don't know, we don't know when it's coming out exactly, so we don't know whether we'll be in time to change some of these, this wording before we have the uh, you know, the final advisory um uh, hearings on this and, and the uh, the, the town meeting, so um. So we're either, we're either too slow or, you know, we, we should have had it already in place, or the other thing is that maybe we just need to wait on this then. It might just be some minor changes to what we have, but it might be significant changes to what we have.
I guess the question is, do you want to keep putting energy into it, which is you know, recognizing that it might get pulled at the last minute if
Well, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. No, I, I, I think we should um maybe table it till we know more and we'll work on it once we have that guidance. I don't need, we don't, I don't think we need to force anything through. I ju, I just want to, you know, the, the thing is, it's going to be another year and, and you know, private developers can come in and do something.
I know, that's the downside, right?
The other thing is we, we come up with a bylaw and it's a town meeting and you know, uh, if we submit it and it's not good to go, then it's just a waste of time. But um if they don't yeah, I don't know. Uh, it, it's, it's a crystal ball, right? It seems, it seems more logical to hold off than it is to move forward with it for town meeting if they're really going to come up with something in the beginning of uh, twenty twenty five.
So let's, let's um we've got a lot of other bylaws to address, but we've got a great headway started with what Frank brought forward. And I think it would be good to have a meeting where we circled back, you know, maybe in late October or, or, I mean, I, maybe the third meeting in October or maybe even in November where we circle back to um what Frank, and we just visit real quickly what Frank had brought forth and uh, see if there was like three or four homework questions that Frank was going to do a little more finding on and maybe he'll have a chance to look at those questions with um, Chris Canny at some point and then we could at least come back in and get get that version updated to based on the questions that we asked last week. And then we'll have that version and it, at least in good shape so that then when we get something from in January, February, we can be kind of, you know, we, we know we need it. We need to go forward next year, definitely. So it'd be nice to have the, you know, the lion's share of the work done with some understanding of, of, you know, I think that the things that we sent Frank to look into further are still relevant regardless of what the state guidelines come out.
Right, because Medway, I mean, the AGO passed Medways and Carvers, so there are a couple examples. There's another town too. So there are a couple of examples with the AGOs accepted and if we're in line with that, the odds are good. The only difference is if things change and, and the AGO takes ninety days to review and during that period things come down differently. They may they ma, they may do what they did with our solar approved part, give some guidance, so you know, disapprove a part and give some warnings. So just something to think about right now, that's all. Because Medway is going to be in the same boat too. They already have something, but what comes out could change what they have. So do you want to revisit that next month?
Let's revisit it next month and try to at least just kind of circle back on the, the, some of the questions that we sent Frank out to try and address and then we'll see where we're at.
So what is the date that we're doing the, our second October meeting? Are we going to do the first November meeting?
Let's go for the first November meeting and, because in the meantime, let's try to get a little more headway on some of the other zoning bylaw questions. If that's okay with everyone.
True.
Okay, thumbs up. Um.
All right, so agro vol takes, the only thing, there was a couple of facts I thought were interesting. Um, I was going to pass on, so they talked about crop production issues um, of what was, what crops grew and what crops did not grow on the panels. Um, they also talked about livestock production issues, what livestock was most successful, which was sheep. Um, chicken and ducks and geese may be good. Goats were not because they tended to jump and climb on the panels. And cattle, cattle were mixed and pigs and horses also not recommended. So it was just some interesting things about what were the landowner benefits? They talked about what were the solar developer benefits? Um and areas like what, just different, where things stood and strategies of um, they, at the end, they were talking about how do you promote this for a rural area, which we did seem to fit a lot of the checkboxes of where some of these would actually be put placed, possibly placed. And just, you know, the public expectation and the lessons learned about the codes and pre-construction meetings and regular inspections to monitor. So there was some good information. If I can get the PowerPoints on that, I'll pass that out as a reference.
Heidi, did they talk at all about uh, energy storage uh, at those uh, agro facilities?
I don't think I had anything specific on the energy storage. I'm trying to look like, I was trying to snap some pictures, listen in between.
So I, you know, I think probably typically they'll, they'll go back into the grid as opposed to going to energy storage and the energy stores might be at the uh, at the grid site. Uh, you know, uh, at the point where it enters the grid versus um, onsite, but it, you know, depending on now what they were doing with it, if they were wanting to back up a certain area of a town, they could have energy storage, you know, at the uh, at the facility.
Yeah, now I'll have to, I'll have to go through and look, but um it ended up being more interesting than I expected. So I'll try and find out more on that, Frank. And that's about it that I had.
Sounds good. Um I don't think there's anything else that we were planning to discuss tonight, so unless there's some last minute unexpected, we have a motion to adjourn.
But you want to just review next meetings quickly?
Meetings, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll continue with the sec, uh, first and third Tuesdays of the month. So that brings us to it'll be October first for the first meeting. And
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I guess the question is, are we, are we doing, going to do hybrid again? So we do, shall we? There was, we were in somewhat of a pattern at one point of doing the first meeting in person and the second meeting Zoom um does feel as much as I, I like to be in the same room with everybody, it sometimes feels chaotic um managing, although tonight we would have just had us, but we still would have had to have the Zoom TV camera on. I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm really torn with the the hybrid concept. Anyone else have an opinion?
Well, I thought one of the things that we had talked about was uh, some of this uh, actual, you know, nitpicky work and going through, it's sometimes better just to go through in paper and in person and just kind of it, it makes it a little bit easier sometimes. Um so does that speak to still meeting in person? Especially if that's what the focus of the next two meetings are about, is, is getting this language worked out?
Is it easier to meet in person? I, I mean, in some ways it's easy when, um, well, I guess it depends. Like I don't have two screens, so to me to try to follow what's going on in Zoom and actually see then the document and work and edit it, I can have a printout on my, in front of me. Um but as far as a group effort, all of us looking at the same thing, it's extremely helpful what Steph did tonight. Um, kind of all looking at the same edits being made. And to, to that point, I feel like a fully Zoom is somewhat easier for editing when we're, we're looking at zoning and editing words, but I don't know if anyone disagrees with that.
I agree, Adam. I think just, you know, word, wordsmithing is easier to do when there's a shared screen, in my opinion. And I'm always happy to share and edit and send out after.
Happy to take the minutes next meeting or, you know, whatever, just to kind of so that you can focus on.
Yeah, yeah, the minutes are, I'll do my best.
It, it seems like when we edit things on the screen in the town hall, that there's a little bit of a, a lag time between what's happening on the screen and then what's in front of us.
And it can be hard to read too.
Yeah.
But, um.
So my, my, I guess my gut would be if we could, maybe the next two meetings since we're trying to do some zoning issues, um, that are wordy and then I'd like to propose we do both of those in fully Zoom.
I think that would be better.
Is that acceptable? So for October, we'll be fully remote. And then from there we can see how we're doing and see if it's working. Okay. All right, hearing no dissension, we'll go fully remote for the October first and the October fifteenth meetings. Um, and then I guess if we could have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Seconded.
Second.
And so Frank's moved, Jim second, all in favor of adjournment. It is eight fifty two P M. Uh, Addie May Weiss is aye. Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Have a good night.